Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, August 22, 2022. I'd like to acknowledge that myself, Russell Fox is here as chairman, vice chairman Doug Mogul is here, clerk Jason Perro, administrative assistant Robin Solak is here. Can we begin with the pledge of allegiance? Sergeant Westcock, would you lead? In the pledge of allegiance, sir.
Did you come up front? Oh, you know, maybe go back.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin, we have some sad news, the passing of Luis Paglavenia, longtime resident in the town of Southwick. She was a member of the historical commission, very active in town. She passed away at the age of 96. So if we could please have a moment of silence for Luis, for Luis Paglavenia, please. Thank you. All right. The first thing on the agenda is public comments. It gives to anyone. And I'd like to make a statement to the select board, that opportunity, we ask that you please stand and state your name and address. We have microphones up here because the acoustics in this building are not good. So before, I have one person zooming in, our town moderator, she has another engagement. She asked to speak first. Is Celeste on there? Celeste, go ahead.
Okay. Hi. Thank you for making time for me. Celeste Saint-Jacques, 22 Deir Rahn, I'm the town moderator. And I just want to let you know, one of my roles, in addition to moderating the town meeting, is appointing the finance committee. In 2020, I was actually approached by Jim Putnam, the former moderator, and asked to consider running for moderator as he was retiring because he felt like he wanted to pass the torch and make changes with town, with town meeting and the whole process of the moderator's position. So now it's time to go into rewrite the bylaw on how the finance committee is appointed since it was last done in March of 2010. So moving forward, my plan to continue to have the finance committee appointed is to look at how other moderators throughout the state, because it is very traditional that moderators throughout the state appoint the finance committee. And since I'm a member of the Massachusetts Moderator Association, I have many connections to them. And we can look at bylaws from other towns. The actual previous moderator who I spoke to today has offered to do some of the research with me because he knows some of the former, the current moderators as well. And he's done this type of research before. And I also have spoken with a citizen who was pretty active in 2019 in trying to pass a different bylaw that didn't pass at town meeting. And she is very interested in helping me with writing this bylaw. I think if we work together, we can really work for positive change and make the process more transparent. I really, what I have to say about the current members of the finance committee, every single one of them, when I've had to go knock on someone's door and ask them, because we had no one to serve, they've gone above and beyond, presented and recommended a budget to the finance, I mean, to the select board. They've just really done a great job. And I just want to note that the moderator has appointed the finance committee for many years. And since I've been the moderator in 2021, at the annual town meeting, an $11.5 million budget passed with only, I think, one or two comments from citizens at the town meeting. And then in 2022, there was not one comment on the finance-presented budget that was $12 million. So they've done an excellent job. They work, work well with the select board. They're very fiscally responsible. And I think we all need to come together and work together to help the common goal is to, you know, prevent overspending and keeping our taxes competitive and as low as possible. So our residents can continue to live here. So I'm hoping that this can make a positive change moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Celeste. Is there anyone else? Hey guys, I saw your hand go up first.
Can I use the microphone if I've got a strong voice?
If you can yell out so they can hear you, hear you on the owl too, I'd appreciate it. But state your name and address first, please.
Changa Hoteling, 45 Pine Road. Good evening, Robyn, select board and citizens. Bear with me while I recite the oath that our select board swears to. Do you solemnly swear to faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office to which you have been elected, so help you God? I'm confident, Mr. Fox and Mr. Mogul, you said yes. The definition of faithfully is in a loyal manner and true to the facts. What were the facts that motivated you both to not reappoint Marissa Cook Overdon, the vice chair of the Conservation Committee? Definition of impartially is in a way that treats all rivals or disputants equally. I'm having a flashback from September of last year when Mr. Fox and Mr. Mogul dismissed three members, one being Marissa Cook Overdon, and then had to reappoint her since it was not within the law. I compel you both to reflect on any actions prior or during the August 8th select board meeting while reflecting on the oath that you swore so, help you God. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Cindy Lamro, 132 Granville Road. I remember the select board meeting on April 25th when our former selectman, Mr. Dede, told me and everyone else in the room that you are the personnel office for the town and serve at the personnel office for the town. In my 31 years as an accountant, I was in a hiring position for most of it. And I made sure that I was very aware of the laws of what you're doing, who you are hiring, and who you are dismissing to make sure there was no possibility of litigation against the company or the school that I worked for. How many women were removed from commissions two weeks ago? One, correct? How many, how many minorities were removed from the board of the environmental board, every commission, two weeks ago? One. The Mass Commission Against Discrimination says that Marissa can file a claim against the town because that is discrimination, because she was the one that was singled out. And I think you've put the town in an awkward position.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, Carolyn Gauthier, 6th Island Palm Road. I'd like to know exactly who did the appointments and whom we won prior to the meeting. Jason, were you involved in decisions?
Public comments is just to make a comment. There is, there is no back and forth.
I'm sorry, I think everybody would like to know who concocted this travesty.
All I'm saying is public comments. Thank you. Is there anyone else? I see a hand up. Deb, you're, I'm going to ask you to use the mic because you have a soft voice.
Tell my husband that. Do I have to press?
Push the button down for me, please.
Deb Harris, 3rd Shore Road. To reiterate what someone had mentioned at the last meeting, there was, it would be great if the questions at the beginning of the meeting and kind of comment could be answered sometime within this or something put up on the website, just so people don't feel that we're ignoring the positions that we're talking about. And my second point is there's been no update on South Park. People don't know, can we start, can we not? I've called the health department. I've talked to several different people. Each person had a different answer. I mean, they're trying really hard, but I'm on the late end, and I haven't heard anything either. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Is there anyone else in this room? I see a hand going up.
Your gentleman, 75 South Vineyard Road. I understand there's an open position on the conservation board. Is that right?
Again, Gary, it's not back and forth. It's make it, make it, you can make a statement.
I'd like to know why that open position didn't occur and why Marissa was not reappointed to her position.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I see two hands that are going up. We'll let the lady go first.
Michelle Pratt, 152 Berkshire Ave. I wanted to start as president of Citizens Restoring Congammon by thanking Russ and Jason for coming to our meeting last time. We have a special presentation on Rona Pond, and so it was great to have you guys there and available for questions and things like that. So thank you very much for that. The Conservation Commission and CRC had some volunteers down at the property a couple Saturdays ago, and it was a great day, I guess. I wasn't, excuse me, I wasn't able to be there. But there was a lot of meeting with folks who were using that property, explaining to them if there's a brochure that's been made up and designed so that people can be more informed about what they are and are not able to do in hopes of, you know, getting everyone on the same page and getting better compliance with the rules over there. So thank you for that. My comment, as a private citizen, not related to Citizens Restoring Congammon, obviously unbelievably disappointed at Marissa Cook Overdon not being reappointed. I think, I feel like I'm broken record. I've been standing up here for, you know, over a year trying to say the same things over and over again. Nothing's happening. And we have, well, actually not, nothing's happening. The same things keep happening over and over again. We've been promised transparency. How do you have a contentious reappointment? You knew it was going to be not unanimous, probably, I'm guessing. You could anticipate that. There's absolutely no discussion. So we don't know why anything happened. Nobody talked about it. That blows our minds, really. And to come out into the newspapers and say that it was because Marissa's on a number of committees and giving someone else a try, that's preposterous. I don't know if you buy that. No one buys that at all. Marissa is incredibly bright, talented, dedicated person. You failed our community by not reappointing her. Conservation Commission has massive responsibility and their legal responsibilities. I polled a handful of commissioners and asked them about how long they think it takes to get up to speed on what the laws and regulations are and how you make those work with community citizens for their businesses, their livelihoods, their homes. They said it probably takes them anywhere from two to three years to really understand all of the law, and those are always changing. So you have to continually study. It's every other week you're meeting. And Marissa went to the MACC conferences every year, spent a whole Saturday of her own going out to learn and to pledge her commitment to her responsibilities. To say she's on too many committees, I don't, I don't see how that can be a thing. The other issue, in your own bylaws, which you're still not, I'm sorry, corrected, in your own protocols, which you're still not following. You talk about having these discussions and talking about the candidates and what makes them good candidates for that. It also says that you're going to be in communication with the different boards and committees. Well, that doesn't happen. It doesn't even happen after they're appointed or not appointed. The chairs have told me that. They don't get notified. They find out afterwards. The applicants themselves don't even know. And they don't find out. That's not communication, and it's not how you guys said you would run things in our town. It's just not happening. So in that effort, I did create a survey that would probably take members of boards or committees all of, you know, 10 minutes tops to fill out very simple questions. Does the member attend at least 75% of meetings? Do they have solid knowledge of their committee's mission and responsibilities? Do they follow the bylaws, the laws and regulations related to their committee? Do they behave respectfully towards other committee members, town officials, members of the community? Are they prepared for their meetings and participate thoughtfully in discussion? And do they respond to emails and responsibilities outside of meeting times? And lastly, would I recommend this person be reappointed to this committee? This is something that all the members of the committees could do when a reappointment is up, then you guys could know. You can't possibly know what's going on on boards and committees. I know you try to probably go to a lot of the meetings. But ask the people that are doing the work on a regular basis. I can't imagine making decisions for boards and committees without knowing all of the information and how their fellow people feel. One of the reasons Marissa is on different things is because people promoted her to it because they think that she's the perfect fit for it. So it's like you're going against what the voters are asking you to not do. It's, it's just, it, it defies logic. So I'd like to present the survey. If you do whatever you want with it, but hopefully you'll have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I saw another hand up. Yes, sir.
St. Perry, 91 Granville Road. Guys, when it comes down to Marissa, I've worked by her side on our commission agriculture. And the thing is, not only is she hardworking, but she was the bridge, literally, to conservation and agriculture. That's rare to get someone so knowledgeable to be able to tie two together and actually say something happens in one, she can literally tell the other and kind of do a mixed communication because she's always there at all the meetings. She's like, was perfect for the role she was in. And you guys later just severed the tie right there. I mean, obviously she's active and she's still going to do it. But that's not beside the point. She should get credit and be known for what she does. She's committed. She's very knowledgeable. She's researching everything. She does so many things out of her own way and time, sacrifices. And that was kind of like a knife in the back. It was disrespectful. And to be honest, I'd be ashamed for giving that call. Jason made the right call. You guys did not mind that. Really assess me. Wow.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in this room?
Good evening. Dennis Clark, 75 Fred Jackson Road. I just wanted to say that after 21 years working for the Conservation Commission, it really breaks my heart to see the select board trying to deconstruct the commission again. I wish you'd take a second look at this and realize how things are going well. And this is not going to help the environment or the town by trying to run the Conservation Commission of the select board. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoom?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have two right now. Joanne.
Joanne, go ahead. State your name and address, please.
Joanne, can you unmute? Thank you.
Joanne LeBlanc, 38 Reservoir Road. And I just want to say how shocked and disappointed I am in the select board not reappointing Marissa. I did, I do attend a lot of the select board meetings, planning board meetings. I've been attending the ad, ad committee and the conservation committee in addition to several other ones. So I have seen Marissa, and she is a very talented, dedicated, hardworking, intelligent woman. Now, I left the select board a little early, early last time. So I played it, I played the video on YouTube, the recording. I was not surprised that you, Mr. Fox, for not approving her to be reinstated. But Doug Mogul, I could not believe. I thought you were better than that. And you couldn't even look that up from your desk when you were talking. I also attended the Conservation Commission meeting last week when Marissa spoke at the beginning. And she's a very classy lady. So I would urge you to please reconsider what you did and maybe fill that empty position, that vacant position with her. It's a, she's an asset to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Who do we have next?
Kimber.
Kimber, if you could state your name and address, please.
Kimberly Lamire, 27 Granville Road. So I agree with everyone that came before me, but for myself, I'd like to say that perception is most people's reality. And you should carry yourself in a better manner so that your perception improves. And I perceive shenanigans again. And I don't think that bodes well for the town or you. Thank you.
Ken, is there anybody else on Zoom? No further. Is there anyone else in this room? Yes, ma'am.
Kennedy, 147 Southlin Street. I'm a lifelong president of Southwick. I've never spoken at one of these events before. I like to keep a little bit under the radar. Personally, since I was a young child, and she has consistently been a role model for me of what a good, honest, upstanding citizen should look like. She is not afraid to talk to those who disagree with her or those who would traditionally keep her down. I am appalled at how harshly you have come down on this woman. I only see a good woman. I don't know you. I can't judge you personally. But to think that you are an elected official who is supposed to be acting in the best interest of the community and then you consistently disregard the wishes of the community and brush under the rug the actions of someone who is trying to better this community, not only for her generation, but for generations to follow, is disappointing and insulting. She is one of the few role models I have that I have just been watching get berated again and again and again. I got involved in local politics because I was appalled. That was happening on a national level. And to think of the same level of dishonesty is happening in my town, it does not sit well. And I don't know how that can sit well with you either.
Thank you. Last call for anybody in this room. All right, we're going on to our first meeting, and that is with the Southwick Town and Granville Regional School District School Committee to fill a vacancy. So I'm going to ask, we have three members, if you'd come up here, please. And you can each take a microphone if you need it. And we have one applicant.
If, if I can, can you sit here quicker?
Yep. Protaph, who's the vice chairman?
I'm going to go with, I'm the secretary of the private department.
Okay, then you are in charge. So I'm going to let you, Ryan, introduce yourself and your other members that are here with you and introduce the candidate, please.
My name is Ryan. I'm the secretary of the school committee here in Southwick Town, Granville Regional School District. We have Erica with us and Pat, and we have Deborah. But that is our only candidate for.
Well, I think we'll just explain to people that this is a vacancy. It's unusual. It's different from how we fill vacancies in town government because you will be fulfilling the entire term. You will not just be appointed to next May's election. It is a joint-elected election by the members, Southwick members of the Regional School Committee and the three select, our select board members. So we, the last time we did this, we did have questions. We have a set of seven questions. And if you, Ryan, would like to begin the questions to the applicant, and then we would give you an opportunity to speak after answering all the questions.
All right, Deborah. Why are you interested in becoming a member of the Southwick Town, Granville Regional School District Regional School Committee?
I'm a longtime resident of Southwick. I'm a 1990 graduate of Southwick High School, as it was affectionately known back then. But I'm also a mom of three children. I have 15-year-old twins entering 10th grade and a 12-year-old boy entering 7th grade. And through these COVID times, being a parent who had to quickly adapt to becoming a homeschooling teacher, it was eye-opening to curriculum, to the activities. And I just became more aware of what my children are actually, actually learning and maybe what they're not learning. I had a situation last year where I didn't really know where to turn. I wasn't quite getting the responses I was looking for from some of our school leaders. And turning to the school committee, that's where the help came from. And I want to be a part of this. I want to be a voice for not just my children, but for all the children in our community and kind of bridge that gap between parents and the school district. Yeah.
Hi, Desmond.
Hi, Erica. How do you keep abreast of issues that are currently facing the Southwick Town and Granville Regional School District?
Well, again, I have three kids in the school system, two that have been in regional school and one was in powder mill. And they do an amazing job of keeping the abreast of the daily ongoings, which, you know, as a parent, you have to listen to, take it for its weight in what's actual and what's not. I had no issue in reaching out to a teacher or principal or vice principal to figure out, you know, are these factual things that are happening or are they just kid things that are happening? After attending my first school committee meeting last year, I do watch them on Zoom or I go back and I replay. And I think there's a wealth of knowledge that happens in those committee meetings that most parents don't know about. So that's, that's how I keep myself informed. Thank you. Thank you.
I wasn't going to mention it at all.
Well, I'll go. What experience and skills do you bring that qualify you for this position?
Well, as a mom, I think I'm overly qualified in every way, shape and form. But I've had a multitude of, or not a multitude, but I've had many jobs that have required me to work closely with different individuals. I was a hairdresser in my younger day. So that's a lot of communication. It's a lot of listening. I've learned to become a very good listener, a talker. Being on display is not my thing. So I think just really listening, being considerate and courteous of the other committee members and of the school leaders is a valuable asset that I think I can possess and contribute to the committee. Pat, you didn't go on.
I know.
I was going to say, Mr. Mogul, you figured it out.
I have an. What is your understanding of the role the school committee plays in the governance of the district?
It's my understanding that the school committee is firstly responsible for the hiring of superintendent and to oversee that the superintendent following the policies and programs that are set forth by the school committee and to any other thing, you know, that pertains to the superintendent. But as I mentioned before, I think it's most important that the school committee is a bridge between parents and our school leaders.
I'm completely baffled now which question I'm supposed to ask, but I'm going to go with this one. Okay, thank you.
I don't think that one hasn't been done.
Okay. What issues in education are of particular interest to you in the Southwick Town and Granville Regional School District?
Well, I can't say this is an issue specific to the education, but I think we are lacking communication skills between our school leaders and parents. And I think that's where our school committee could really come into play in trying to close that gap. I find a lot of times things are related to the students, and they either don't get back to us parents at all or they're misconstrued, and perhaps it's, it's something that should have just come directly from our school leaders as opposed to the children. So I think communication would be my number one concern at this point.
Good. Thank you. Can I ask a follow-up on that?
Yes.
Do you have any thoughts on how that could be improved?
I think it's opening up that door of communication. I think the school leaders perhaps need to listen a little bit more to what parents are saying and be sometimes more receptive to what our concerns might be. I don't like having to call three people to get the answer that one person should be able to deliver. So I think just opening that door and being a little more receptive to what parents or other community people are concerned with.
Thank you. Go ahead. You figured it out. It's me. I'm glad I wasn't the only one, but I believe I'm on what previous committee experience do you have?
Well, unfortunately, I don't have any.
I, I.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And how will it benefit the Southwick Town and Granville Regional School District?
So I don't have any committee experience. I have been quite busy the past 15 years raising my children. I worked in dog rescue for many years, which is quite time-consuming. But in that scenario was, you know, working with people. Again, the listening and respecting each other and what our values are. But direct committee. Um, but direct committee. Experience I don't have, but I'm looking forward to the opportunity to gain a lot of experience here.
Right, yeah. The last one.
There you go.
What type of commitment will you make?
Um, I am fully prepared to go all in. Um, I will definitely commit to this three year term. Um, I'm a firm believer in teaching my kids that you finish what you start and you don't quit in the middle of anything. So I am fully prepared to make that commitment.
Do you have any comments or statement that you would like to make to this group?
No, I would just like to thank you all for giving me this opportunity to come here tonight, um, and giving me the chance to fill this vacancy.
Okay. Are you prepared to make a decision tonight?
Yeah.
Would someone like to make a nomination?
I would like nominee Desiree along.
Would somebody like to second that?
Second.
Okay. We will have a roll call vote. I will start with the school.
Yeah. Yes.
But. You gotta say your full name and and.
Uh, let's see where. Brian Crump, yes. Erica Elman, yes.
Patrick Young, yes.
Doug Mogul, yes.
Russell Fox, yes.
Jason Perron, yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I would suggest that you get sworn in immediately at the town clerk's office because you have some sort of event that's coming up.
On Wednesday.
On Wednesday. So if you can, uh, make arrangements with, uh, Michelle Hill or Jessica or Holly, one of them gets sworn in. And, uh, they're gonna make you sign that you know certain things. You're gonna have to take certain tests online. Um, don't worry, they're they're not complicated and congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Very much, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. All right, we're doing good. Uh, the next thing we're gonna be moving on to. Are the, uh, interviews. For deputy chief of the fire department. Uh, we have two applicants. Uh. Who's the deputy chief here? Bring in the. Is the deputy chief back there? Yeah, thank you. Very good. You could sign your name at the top and who the applicant is. This will all be turned in at the end of this. Interview along with the resumes. Those are all confidential documents. Deputy Chief, uh, soon to be, uh, current fire chief, would you like to make the introduction?
So we have two candidates for deputy chief position. Our first candidate is Jessica Bishop.
Come up and shake her hands, but it doesn't seem that it's. At this moment.
It's not conducive in this room.
Fair enough.
Uh, we have a microphone there if you would like to use it. But if you don't use it, we're gonna ask you to speak as loud as you can, Jess, just so people on Zoom can hear you.
Yes, sir.
Um. We had. Sixteen or seventeen questions. I whittled it down to nine, so it'd be three apiece for the board members. At the conclusion of that, we're gonna give you an opportunity to make any statement that you would like to this board. At this time, I have not conferred with the board whether or not we will be making a decision tonight. But I would hope that we would make a decision as quickly as possible because this affects. The 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 next thing we have on the agenda is that is for our firefighter force. So. Uh, with that, I will begin with the first question. You have a water? You're all set?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. How has your previous experience prepared you for the position of deputy fire chief?
You know, I'm a a big believer in the fact that every experience is a learning experience. Um, you have to compile your whole life of them to get you where you are today. So I've had great opportunities to learn from great leaders, both in fire and EMS. I've had great opportunities. To learn on the opposite end of that scale and see people who do things that I know I do not want to replicate. Um, it's also a good education. Sometimes seeing bad stuff is is a good education as well. I. Over my fourteen year career in this business, um, I've worked. For two private EMS services and two career fire departments. As well as worked alongside multiple other fire departments in mutually aspects. All of those opportunities to learn how. Other places are run, how other problems are solved. Or also how similar all the problems are across the board for this business. Um, has really led me. Here. Having those opportunities to see and learn has led me to this position here. Trying to achieve the deputy chief position because of what I've seen and what I've learned. And how I see a future for our department.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mogul?
How do you handle being told no?
As I'm assuming that kind of question is coming from. Either, uh, obviously those above me as far as the chief or you guys sitting as the board. You know. My goal would be to be diligent enough. That when I was coming to present something in a question form. I would love to make it impossible for you to say no. I would love to have done the legwork. I would love to have presented it in such a way. That there would be no disputable way that you could say no. Um, I'm also a realist and I know that. Yes isn't always the answer to everything. It can't be. That's not reality. In that manner, I would just refocus on what needs to be done, putting the town, the department, the department's members. All back in focus and work with the tools that I have to solve the problem that's ahead of me. Um. Realistically, I find that that's. Probably the most realistic answer to that question is to be adaptive and work with what you have. But secondary, I'd always say if I came with a request and the answer was no. My goal would be first adapt and achieve what I need to achieve, but also lay the groundwork. For us to come to a place where yes is going to be the answer the next time I have that same question. So if, you know, whatever would need to be done, what can we do on our side? To get, you know, up to the level where yes is going to be the right answer.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Perron.
What do you feel is the most important quality of someone in a command staff position?
Consistency. So. In my opinion, there's. A hundred ways to do this job and do it well. There's so many good things that can be in a leader. And you could have so many of those qualities, but if you are inconsistent, you can lose your entire track record. Um, you know, it's really hard for people to continue to buy in and follow. A person who was wishy washy, a person who's not consistent and steadfast in, you know, and I don't mean that as in unmoving. I mean consistency as in if the sky is going to be blue, it's gonna be blue tomorrow too.
Jess. What is the biggest challenge you will face if you get this new position?
You know, the assessment center was an experience. Um. And it's. Something that if you haven't done one, you wouldn't, you don't know what it is until you walk in. And. I wouldn't call it fun, but I would say it was eye opening. In the way that it showed me, in my opinion, where I think my strengths and weaknesses would be. So things that I would need to work on, you know. For anybody in this room that knows me, knows that education is always the thing that I obtain and lust for. I always want to be educated. Um, I would just say that the challenge for me would be. Finding that time to continue my education, to continue learning. The best ways that, you know, you can lead, the best ways that we can work together. Um, you know, those challenges. Finding that time to continue educating myself because I think it's a very busy job.
I'm gonna follow up with a question. In your letter to this board. You talked about different courses that you just recently enrolled in. Some that because of COVID, you couldn't take previous to this. If you were to get this position. Is it your intent to complete these courses? Barring any unforeseen.
The the short answer is yes. Whether I get this position or not, I will complete those courses. Um, you know, if this position is in a today job, it's never going to be out of the purview that it's a goal. So yes, my continuing my education is one hundred percent. A a full on commitment that I have. So I will finish a course in September. That will actually rewind to allow me to challenge exams for courses I completed. That we couldn't do in person through COVID. I completed them online, but I can't take the exam because I have to finish another class. There was, there was a lot of tightrope walking. Um, trying to figure out how to make things work, but. The the indefinite answer is I will continue. I will achieve all of those classes. Okay?
Thank you very much. Smoglin?
Which area do you feel you are stronger in, fire or EMS, and why?
EMS, so there. We have. A career job that requires two things that have nothing in common, and we call it a job. Um. EMS exists seven days a week. Almost twenty four hours a day. Firefighting exists thankfully due to good education systems, due to good public education as far as. Uh, fire prevention. Fires thankfully don't happen seven days a week, so. It is difficult to feel confident and comfortable on something that we have little to no exp. Um. We train, we educate, but hands on experience, um, I'll never be as comfortable. Uh, you know, on a fire as I am the ten times a day that I get on an ambulance. That's, you know, anybody who says that they're equally as comfortable, I don't know that that could ever be true.
Thank you.
If you had the opportunity, how would you restructure the department? Uh, quotes, full time, part time, volunteer, etc.
I don't know that we're at a point for restructuring. I think we are at a point of. Trying to get the buy in back where we can get. People comfortable with the working relationships that we have. So. Staffing. The house with three people. Um, you know, in my assessment center, I was gonna play the odds and hope that our. Incident that we had to run is gonna be a nice little single family structure fire, because, you know, playing the odds in Southwood. No, quite quite the opposite. We burned out an apartment building. And. I had to respond on paper with three people and an engine. And that's our staffing. That's realistic. We don't suffice a eight to ten minute shift. That's not who we are. We need our call guys. That's still a thing. It is still a job. They are still very relevant. Um, I think it's not a restructure. I think it's a reset mentality. Because initially, when I joined the department, um, as a call man. We were welcomed and I would like to get back there.
Follow up, do you, do you think that's not the case? Now? Having, having worked on both sides of the, of this street, if you will, for that.
Um, like independently in the department, I think there's just. Struggle, growing pains, you know, people are trying to figure out where that balance is. And some, sometimes, you know, we get so focused on fixing, you know, problem A. That it, something goes to the wayside over here and these people feel left out or these people feel that they're not getting enough. It's tough business. It's, there's nothing easy about it.
Thank you. Some of these questions, of course, are gonna overlap, okay? What are the three biggest challenges facing the Southwood Fire Department today?
We have made leaps and bounds in staffing. However, in this business, in every place across the country, retention is a real problem. So that challenge alone. Is going to supersede almost all the other challenges. So staffing to a level and then retaining that staff is going to be challenging. Um. You know, the people that came before have done a a pretty spectacular job as far as equipment. And the things that they have accomplished in their time, which is an open door for someone like me to walk in and know. That yes, you're always planning for the next big thing, the next big purchase, the next big improvement to the department. Um, so. I don't see it as a challenge. I see it as a requirement of the job that you have to be prepared to lay that. That path and follow. People set pretty good examples prior to us. Uh, and. The third thing, I think it's keeping up with technology. So we have to, you know, stay on top of it. We have to keep. Working. Right now, there's some issues with. It's minor. It seems so minor, except for that it's very important. Just our notification systems, our scheduling systems. Um, you know, there's. Hundreds of choices and there's a combination that will work. We just have to get there. And those things, they're, they're true challenges as minor as they seem.
Thank you. Mr. Smoglin?
What goals would you hope to achieve selected for this position?
Personal, a personal goal would be to continue my education. Um. You know, there's. An endless amount of certifications and classes that can exist in a position like this. So personally, my goal would be to, you know, always be educating myself professionally. I'm still one of those people who looks at things like I can make it better. I want to make it. The place where people want to come to work. And I think. That there's, we have such great infrastructure of people right now. That if we could work. In a manner to get on the same page, we could make that kind of work environment. And that will be my, my professional goal.
This is prone, last question. All right, I get the last one, and actually this was one of mine, so. You know my background, so this is important to me. As a supervisor or a leader, there are skills that effective leaders have. What do you think are the most skills, important skills they could have and why?
Still consistency. So that one's the always gonna be up there. And then it goes, I, the list is almost endless about the things that are important in leading. Um. I think there has to be a level of openness, willing to hear what people have to say. Um. And not only hear it, but actively hear it, you know, really listen to what somebody has to say. I think, you know, as an employee that's had experiences with leaders that. You have something to say and they they can't hear you, no matter how hard you try, is defeated. And I don't want to be the the reason someone gets defeated. Um. I, I know it's counterintuitive. I, I know it's counterintuitive, but I also would like to be the kind of leader that is not a micromanager. So I can get my hands dirty any day of the week, do with any job, scrubbing a toilet, uh, cleaning an ambulance, going in a fire, all of those jobs, I still love every part of that job. But I don't want to be the kind of leader who says, I want you to scrub the toilet, and this is how I want you to do it. I don't need to be that guy, it's scrubbing a toilet. So I think, to me, those three things are the three that I think are most important to me.
Yes, now it's an opportunity for you to make any statement that you'd like to this board. If it's a book.
No, no sir, not at all, my name's not. I've had this kind of longstanding statement about my career since I started in this career. And my statement is, I wish I knew what I wanted to be when I grew up, just a little bit earlier in my life. I do believe, as I've said, that every experience that I have gone through has led me here. It was meant to educate me and prepare me for this, this moment. Back in two thousand and two, in Maine, a man got trampled by a horse in front of a restaurant that I ran. In two thousand and nine, a woman next to me in a restaurant choked, choked and fell unconscious in front of my face. And in two thousand and eleven, a truck driver that was driving by the oral surgeon's office that I worked at pulled into the parking lot, stumbled out of his truck, fell into my office and said, I think I'm having a heart attack. That's how I was guided through this career. At each of those scenes, I acted without hesitation. I stood up because I saw a problem. I made decisions, I led other people around me, and I acted. And because I'm lucky, never good but lucky, all three of those had really good outcomes. But at one point, somebody asked me, what ambulance service do you work for? And I said, huh, I don't have any training in this. And the next day, I walked into the Southwick Fire Department. And at thirty-four years old, I started a career. I've, the department, the town graciously assisted with me becoming an EMT. I went on the call side, I got one part of a fire certification. You couldn't kick me off the bus, you couldn't kick me out of the building. Thirty-four years old, I couldn't go home, thirty-four hours a week, I didn't want to leave. I saw every part of my future, the first day I walked into that building. Into paramedicine, into certified firefighting. I never knew that you could love something that somebody would pay you to do, as much as I did today, that I realized that you could do this for a career. And I want to be able to give that to somebody behind you. Leading and mentoring gives you that opportunity to have an effect on the future. And given a chance at a position like this, I think I can excel there, because someone did it for me, and I want to do it for someone else. So yeah, guys, thank you so much for your time. I would like to thank the Fire Department as well, that Assessment Center, like I said, never going to be the funnest day of my life, but I thought it was, um, eye-opening and educating in itself. Uh, and I'm not sure if you guys were privy to the board that we sat with from the Fire Department, we also had an interview panel with them. Kudos to whoever came up with those questions, because they were intimate. And those questions that they asked were so that they could see you as a person that was interviewing, so kudos to this whole process, it's, uh, given me some sleepless nights, but I'm here, I've appreciated it. That's all I got.
All right, I want to thank you. We're going to interview the other candidate, like I said, I don't know if we'll be making a decision tonight. But on a personal note, you and the other applicant have both worked on family members in times of emergency. And thank you very much.
Same here, thank you.
Thank you.
You didn't miss a thing.
Good evening again, our second candidate, you guys prefer your chief, Jeff Amber.
If you need a water or anything, Jeff. Make the same speech I made to the last applicant. We have a set of questions here, we're going to ask those questions. We're going to give you an opportunity at the end to make any statement you'd like to make to the board. The board, I haven't discussed with the board, when we'll be making a decision, I hope we do it quickly, because it does impact the other interviews we're going to be doing later on for the firefighters. So, uh, with that, if you're ready, I start off with the first question. How has your previous experience prepared you for the position of Deputy Fire Chief?
I've served in the fire service since two thousand and ten, served as a line firefighter until two thousand and fourteen, when I took over as the officer in charge of my previous shift at my previous department. I was promoted to the rank as captain in two thousand and twenty and served in that capacity until I came here to Southwick in February this year. But, uh, pretty pretty good knowledge at least in shift officer level, administration, responsible for four guys on a ship on a department of similar size, to Southwick from where I came from.
Just to follow up from your thing, that was green field, correct?
Orange.
Orange, I apologize.
Green, orange. Those colors.
I'm getting older, folks.
Jeff.
Sir.
How do you handle being told no?
As politely as possible. There's always going to be adversity in any position in a department, and, uh, always sometimes the answer that it has to be. I like to think that I can find creative ways to try to come up with alternatives, but if it's a hard no, then it's a hard no.
What do you feel is the most important quality of someone in a command staff position?
Respect and confidence from the people that you're leading. They need to understand that you know what you're doing, and you have to have the trust and respect from the troops, believe from the front.
Jeff, if you got this position, what is the biggest challenge you will face?
I think personnel issues are always going to be the biggest problem in any administrative position. This department has made great strides in the last few years with increasing staffing level, bringing the ambulance up to the paramedic level, and getting staffing around the clock. My vision would be to continue to grow on those aspects and continue to improve the service the department provides the community.
Which area do you feel you are stronger in, fire or EMS, and why?
Fire without a doubt, that's where I've focused a lot of my studies. I've spent many hours at the Mass Fire Academy, certified through the level of fire officer three, the chief officer rank. I recognize by National Pro Board Association. I am a certified nationally-registered paramedic as well, but the passion certainly is on the fireside for me, and always has been.
Whenever you're ready, Jeff. If you had the opportunity, how would you restructure the department, full-time, part-time, volunteer, etc.
I think in an ideal environment, we would have a chief officer, followed by a deputy chief that oversee the line firefighters. We would have a career officer on each shift with a shift of, of four people, four firefighters per shift. The call force has certainly been a great asset to the department over the years, and it's helped grow to what it is today. And I would love to see that stay intact. As everybody knows, people are less and less available during the days, and having the career staff around certainly helps fill in those gaps when we don't have as many people around from the call force. So some, some level of call force involvement there remaining would be ideal to supplement the gaps in staffing and bigger events that we have that aren't mitigated with the four, five, six people that might be in the station at that day.
Jeff, what are the three biggest challenges facing the Southwick Fire Department today?
Today is staffing, that would be number one. Again, we run through paramedic-level ambulances out of that fire station, and getting two paramedic-level ambulances out the door is tough with the two full-time people that we have. If we're lucky, we have a per diem working for the day, and then the deputy chief also operates as a paramedic, so staffing is definitely the number one. Number two is, uh, probably our water infrastructure in town, we have a combination between hydrated and non-hydrated districts. So water supply for us operationally can be a challenge. And, uh, number three would probably be the the operations of career and call working together, and having harmony, if you will, between the two as things change and evolve through the years.
Thank you. You have any thoughts on that, if I have a follow-up, Jeff? On, on a combination department? Like how you make that work better, or continue improving that space?
I, I think it's going to require work, uh, from both sides, and it's going to require a little bit different train of thought as things move forward, because like I kind of alluded to already, the call force does a great job. But they are not always available all the time. And same thing from the career force, we can't rely strictly on career, so working together is, is key. I don't have the magic answer to make it work right, but mutual respect from both sides and trying to have an open mind to make it work is certainly, uh, my idea of success.
What goals would you hope to achieve if selected for this position?
My goal will be to get the paramedic-level ambulance staff twenty-four hours a day, seventy days a week, three sixty-five a year. And I'd love to see the staffing level increase to, uh, that ideal number someday down the road, or have a capital plan of how to get to that point of having four firefighters a shift. I would love to see the continued success of the department and the community, and some, uh, future endeavors, uh, fall programs for seniors or blood pressure clinics, or things that we can do to be more involved with the community. I think just strengthens our relationship with the community members.
Can I ask a follow-up on that again? Sorry, I'm taking over.
No, no, sir.
What do you, what do you perceive? What is your perception of the, the community's perception of the Southwood Fire Department?
I think the community respects the Fire Department very much. I think the, uh, the department has done a great job of reaching out to the community, and it's built a great working relationship with the community, from what I've seen.
Last follow-up.
Sure.
Do you think that this entire community, and I think there's going to be people that are going to watch this, do you think there's people in town that don't even know that we have a full-time fire department in town of Southwick?
I absolutely do, we, uh, we try to educate people every time we have encounters and the opportunity to bring it up, we, we try to educate the public, because there are many people that believe this department is still a on-call or volunteer department. And they don't really understand the benefits they're getting when the tax dollars are going into that department. We're getting a paramedic-level service with skilled, qualified people, and, uh, they're doing a great job. The Southwood Fire Department is a skilled operation, no doubt.
Thank you. All right. As a supervisor or leader, there are skills that effective leaders have. What do you think are the most important skills a leader should have, and why?
Clear communication and identify roles and responsibilities to supervisors. There's always, um, strengthen that relationship between, uh, leaders and subordinates. Having clear outlined objectives for people to complete, um, and being open to feedback or questions is, uh, something I believe is very strong.
Very good, Jeff, thank you. Jeff, now you have an opportunity to make any statement you'd like to make to this board.
I think I'll just leave a statement that I'm very happy that I came here in February. Uh, I'm very impressed with this community itself. Obviously, it's been, uh, two decades since I've lived in this town, but it's nice to be home. I closed on my new house, my grandfather's house, on Wednesday. So I will be back in town here in just another forty-eight hours, living here permanently. And, uh, it's just really great to be back, so I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to be here.
Going to make the same statement I made to the other, uh, person, that, uh, personally, you and the other applicant have attended my relatives in times of emergency, and thank you very much for that.
Thank you, sir.
Jeff, like I said, I don't know if we're making a decision tonight, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Deputy Chief, could you come forward, please? We're all set, Jeff. Rich, I'm, I'm not going to put you on the spot, but I'm going to just ask this question. Are you comfortable with either one of these applicants being deputy chief in the town of Southwick?
Yes, I am. Both did remarkably well on the Assessment Center, although if you ask them, they wouldn't say that they did. But the scores speak for themselves, they both did remarkably well. Um, and it was a very challenging Assessment Center. Uh, second part of it was the interviews that Jessica Bishop had alluded to, it was a very good interview process. We had some good questions, we had some very honest answers, and so it was, it's neck and neck, it's a tight race right now, and I would say that yes, I would be comfortable with either one.
Thank you very much. Deputy Chief, any questions? Okay. Yes, we are going right in, because, uh, we, we're running a little behind, and maybe we can, uh, I don't know. We're not going to catch you, we know that. All right, all that stuff will have to be turned in after we make a decision. And here, with the separate folder, right, Robin? Okay.
We have a total of four candidates tonight for a position with the Southwood Fire Department. Put it down, our first candidate.
Krista, you need, you need a water or anything like that? And you're going to make some more copies, that's a good, good, thank you for saying you needed water, because we got to make copies. It gives us a chance to fill out the first, uh, applicant's name. We apologize for running a little late. Krista, what we're going to do is, we're going to have a set of questions, we have five questions that we're going to ask of you. At that time, we're going to give you an opportunity to make any statement you'd like to the board. At this particular point, I do not know when we will be making our decision, I don't know if it'll be tonight or at our, our meeting next. Or at our our meeting next week.
Okay.
We're going to get you a water first and get those copies.
Mr. Chairman, I'm getting notified that people on Zoom are having a hard time here.
Okay, and we are going to ask you to use that microphone when. Yeah, the time is and Ken will tell you, you got to press it and hold it for so many seconds.
Two seconds till the green light.
Till the green light goes out. My apologies, apologies to anybody on Zoom. Thank you for notifying us. The acoustic in this room are terrible. Okay. So here we go, Krista. Why do you want to work in Southwick as a firefighter slash EMT?
I want to work in the town of Southwood as a firefighter EMT.
You got to hold it a little closer.
I love the small community, having just over nine thousand citizens in Southwick. And a very. Clean town. I. Lived for the last year and a half. Just on the street in Prandamon Lakes. I just loved the small county feel, the. That everybody was. See, seem to want to help each other. I had wanted to be a firefighter before, since I was about ten years old. And it took me. Life kind of got away and it took me until COVID happened to be able to follow my dreams to make that happen.
Yeah, I'm done. I was ready to slow. In your view, how does the chain of command differ in emergency and non emergency situations?
In my opinion. It really doesn't change whether it's emergency or non emergency, there will always be a chain of command to follow. With emergency services, it is a little bit more important to be able to follow that chain of command. Just because. It is sometimes a life to death situation, you want to make sure that not only you, but the people you were serving and. Your coworkers, so everybody is safe. So it's just a little bit more important, but there should always be some sort of chain of command, whether emergency or non emergency.
How do you handle an assignment given to you from a superior who you do not agree with?
I believe it is important, even if I disagree in the moment. That it is, there is a reason that they are superior. That I would talk to them about it after. I would follow the. Or do what was asked of me, but then I would also. Talk to them. After the fact, after. The call happened to kind of find out why they went that direction versus. What I was thinking, you can always learn, they're obviously again a superior for a certain reason. They have more experience than you. And you can always learn from people who have that experience.
Krista. What was your greatest failure? And what did you learn from that experience? And this doesn't have to be fire related.
So this was more of a personal one, so I lived in Southern California for three years. I kind of decided to follow. The California dream and move out there when I was about twenty four years old. I stayed out there for three years and. I was unable to make that California dream work, but I was able to learn a lot of life lessons, a lot of personal. Lessons, I was able to grow. Personally and professionally. While I was out there. And I ended up coming back here and not something that I regret, but it was. For a long time in my head, it was a big failure for me that I wasn't able to stay out there, but it just was not right.
Good. So a follow up to that, what's your? What did you learn from that experience?
I learned to trust me in space, I had gone out there. Again, just to kind of make that work and it. I went through a lot of turmoil, a lot of. Emotional abuse. Luckily, it was not anything that was physical, but it. Me or other person realized what I wanted to do, who I wanted to be. And to actually pursue that more. So that I can show a better example for my son.
Thank you. On a lighter note. Are you aware this is a small department that will be growing over the years to come? Where do you see yourself in the next three to seven years?
Yes, I do realize that it's a smaller department. I see myself going through as many trainings as possible, anything that is available to me. From in water to anything paramedic. Any sort of fire certifications. And possibly moving up. Moving up the chain of command by those end of those seven years.
Alright, Krista. Now it's your opportunity to make any statement, ask any questions you would like of this board.
I don't think at this moment I have anything else. But say thank you for this opportunity.
Okay, thank you very much. This is alphabetical, right?
Our second candidate, we stand early.
Good evening, Ian.
Good evening.
Need a water or anything?
Uh, no, it's good, thank you.
Okay, we've been told because we're on Zoom, people are having a hard time hearing, so we're going to ask you to use that microphone. I I don't know if it's still on or not, to see a green light.
One quick tap on the button. Green.
Alright, okay. We were asking five set of questions to all the applicants. At the conclusion of that, we're going to give you an opportunity to make any statement you'd like to this board. I have not asked the board whether or not we'll be making a decision tonight. But if we don't tonight, I would be hoping that we'd make it by next week.
Sounds good.
Okay, so I'm going to begin with the first question. Ian, why do you want to work in Southwick as a firefighter EMT?
I want to work in Southwick because it is a growing department that I think has a lot of potential. And everything that I've heard about it. There is people I've talked to in the area of current employees. It sounds like the department. Will meet my high standards for what the fire department should offer its employees. As well as I hope I can offer. Then what they have for their high standards.
Thank you. Ian, in your view, how does the chain of command differ in emergency and non emergency situations?
I think it's. Always important, but it's more important in emergency situations. Because there's, you don't have time to have. You know, a democratic discussion when there's some sort of an emergency situation going on. So it's important to follow that chain of command so that. Things need done, need to get done, when they need to get done. Whereas in a non emergency situation, obviously, time is not. As important, so you have a little more leeway. In maybe making an alternative suggestion. Or. If you need to go outside of the chain of command in a non emergency situation for certain reasons. Where that could be. Necessary, but in an emergency situation, you don't have time to second guess anyone, so you don't know what the chain of command is and follow it.
Thank you. I have a follow up on that one.
Okay.
In an emergency situation. If you know the decision from the superior above you is incorrect in policy, procedure, or legal manner, are you comfortable stepping in? And taking that decision to take over?
Yes, if there's some sort of a safety or legal issue or whatever order is being given. It's the normal practice for anyone who realizes that the government pointed that out.
Thank you. Much forget, yes, sir. How do you handle an assignment given to you from a superior who you do not agree with?
As far as if there's not.
That's what I'm going to go with, yes.
I mean, if it's not an emergency type of situation, I may try to offer my alternative suggestion. But ultimately, if that order is given to me, that follow up that order, that's the decision to make.
So, thank you. Okay, Ian. What was your greatest failure? And what did you learn from that experience? And it doesn't have to be fire EMT related.
Guess I would say my greatest failure. Was. Getting fired from one of my jobs earlier in my career. It wasn't, I didn't do anything wrong, it was just a situation where. I had grown apart from the job and. It had become apparent that I shouldn't be doing that job. When I switched into this career, but just wanting to be willing, knowing that I can. Let my employer down. That was what it came to.
Thank you. Are you aware that this is a small department that will be growing over the years to come? Where do you see yourself in the next three to seven years?
Yes, I am aware. This is a small town with a growing department. One of the big attractions for me. I've been in this field full time for over six years now. And I feel that within the next three to seven years, I could see myself in an obstacle. Within the department. I think I have a lot of relevant experience. From what I believe is a slightly busier department. And I have a lot of training. Some real world experiences of leadership and. It's it's something that I haven't seen myself grow into, that's where I would like to be in that.
Okay, thank you. Ian, now it's your opportunity to make any statement or any questions that you have of this score.
Thank you very much for the time and consideration.
Alright, thank you, Ian.
The third candidate for full time firefighter, Ryan, yeah.
Alright, Ryan, have a, have a seat. Do you want a water or anything?
Thank you, I'm all set right now, thank you.
You got a good, strong voice, but people on Zoom are having a hard time hearing. There's a microphone in front of you. We need a green button or a green light on it. Just tap it. Tap it hard if you have to.
There we go.
Okay, keep it as close as you can. Ryan, we have five questions that we're going to ask you. At the conclusion of that, you can make any statement you'd like or ask any questions you'd like. I have not conferred with the board, so I don't know whether or not we will be making a decision tonight. If we don't, I would hope that we'd make a decision by next meeting, which would be next week. Okay, so I'm going to start off with the first question. Ryan, why do you want to work in Southwick as a firefighter slash EMT?
That's the first question. So I just wanted to work in Southwick. I grew up in the city right over the border. Growing up, I spent a lot of summer time in Montgomery, so I'm very, very fond of this town. The Southwood Fire Department is a phenomenal department worker from everything I've been told. The degrees are very good. Sorry, I got lost. One of the main reasons I want to work in this town is that it's a small town, so I'll be able to know everyone from the. People in the community. The fire chief and deputy chiefs, police officers, wherever I work in a bigger town, I would not have the same ability. To get out in the public as much as I would like to.
Good. Small one. In your view. How does the chain of command differ in emergency and non emergency situations?
The chain of command in an emergency situation or emergency environment is very specific for a very important reason. The person in charge of the incident commander, their job is overall control and safety. Moving down the responsive man to the no one demanded person is in charge of doing the people, ensuring the safety of everyone involved. And different responsibilities are set upon others. I know in many ways that they're very similar with emergency, non emergency though. When I was taught my ICS classes, I was taught that as a wedding planner, you can use the exact same concepts. Of an ICS incident that you does. Were playing a wedding or running a fire scene. Chain man is very important. I have heard of my director, right, he's. He's a horse supervisor, but not until. So on of the line. Essentially, to make sure that everything's following in a nice orderly connection, into the best, best practices for the best outcomes.
Alright, how do you handle an assignment that's given to you from a superior who you do not agree with?
When you say disagree, there are several examples that go into meetings agreeing with it. If I just don't like it for whatever reason. It's my job and one to do, and I'm going to do it to the best of my ability. If I don't like it because it is ethical, moral, or legal infringement, I have a moral ethical duty. To do what is right and just involved. If I'm given an order that would result in someone's loss of life or eyesight. Or putting someone in a path of danger, I'm duty bound to disregard that order and explain why in order for the public, my paramedics, I'll say.
Awesome, thank you. Very good answer. Ryan. What was your greatest failure and what did you learn from that experience? And this doesn't have to be just fire or EMT.
That's a very hard question, sir. Um.
That's why we asked this one.
Probably my biggest story that comes to my mind is when I was younger, I made a very stupid decision. I made a very silly TikTok video. And I wasn't in uniform, wasn't at work, didn't say what words, didn't say anything like that, didn't violate the law. But it resulted in being a fire in this company that might rise. I've learned from that. I don't make the same mistake twice. But that was one of my biggest goals is because I lost my job. And I had to start my reputation from the ground up again. Which I believe I've done a very successful job to.
Very good, very honest. Thank you. Smooth one.
Ryan. Are you aware this is a small department that will be growing over the years to come? Where do you see yourself in the next three to seven years?
I know this door is in a state of broke. In the next three years, I'd like to see myself doing more. I'd love to see myself as a preceptor for de-launching paramedics and deputies. I think teaching is one of my most favorite things to do as a healthcare provider. I love uh teaching the next generation. And then in seven years, hopefully I'll be testing for a driver operator or lieutenant position. But if I had joined a volunteer, I would still want to be a firefighter than my dreams and sounds like a little bit.
All right, we've gone through the five question. Now it's an opportunity for you to make any statement you'd like or ask any questions, sir.
You're in a very important decision process right now, hiring a firefighter is gonna be protect the town with hands that you want. If there's anything that you can want me to do, take any additional training, what would you say would make me a better candidate? In the next three or four years.
Me personally, I, I look at our deputy chief and put him right on the spot and, and say. Tell me what to say, deputy chief.
It's well, coming into our department with, with no multiple factors, we need to be more focused and equipped with. Um, learning to be a firefighter in our community, using our budget, also data responsibility to call. And the certification part of this is part of the important, more importantly, to the initial, you know, your probation. In that time, any probation of a firefighter should be taken on as much responsibility they can handle. On the floor, physical, which is trying to do as much outside of the team as possible. But making sure that the energy you are spending is going in the right place. It's really going towards making the apartment better and it's like that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, chief. Any other statements or questions?
I'm all, when you say a veteran, I've never said it's all I can think about at this time.
That, you're a very honest man, Ryan. I appreciate that.
I learned my lessons.
There you go. There you go. All right, like I said, I don't know if we're making a decision tonight. Uh, but I hope that we're gonna make a decision if not tonight, by next week.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that.
Right, and as, and I, I probably should have said this to all the uh people that we interview. There's a possibility that there could possibly be two. Uh, people that will be uh offering uh employment to or, or just one, but uh. Uh, we hope all the applicants uh. Uh, continue to be interested in the town of Southwick.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Keep it in front of us all. There we go.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Final person for introducing tonight is Jessica Malusi. She's interviewing for a firefighter EMT in Southwick.
Jessica, have a seat. Do you need a water or anything? Okay, uh, we've had some complaints about people on Zoom. They can't hear, so we're gonna ask you to use that microphone. Do you see a green light on?
Uh, this, there's a red light.
Okay, press it hard.
Not the light, the button below.
Yeah, there's a button. Uh, can you hear me now?
Very good, very good. Cause you have a soft voice, so I'm gonna ask you to keep that microphone right there. All right, Jessica. Uh, we have four applicants tonight. We're asking each of the applicants five questions. At the conclusion of that, we're gonna give you an opportunity to make any statement you'd like to the board, ask any questions. I don't know whether we'll be making a decision tonight. If not, I would hope at the very least we'd make a decision by our meeting next Monday.
Of course.
Okay, so I'm gonna begin, Jessica, with the first question. Why do you want to work in Southwick as a firefighter EMT?
So, it's an interesting question because originally I moved to Southwick. Um, because my, my boyfriend found um. And when the opportunities here, and I decided that it was better for me to also move to Southwick. And um I figured, you know, if I'm moving from Connecticut to Massachusetts, you know, I'll find a fire job in Massachusetts. And the only thing that I ever really heard of was little service exam, right? And um, but I wanted to continue my education and my training and my uh public service to the community. So I wanted to go and head on to Southwick. So originally, I actually didn't plan on working at Southwick. I wasn't, I didn't know that there were gonna be opportunities here at all. Um, I just came here to make sure that I would still do what I wanted to do and, you know, not let my skills diminish at all, especially as a fresh graduate from fire one. Um, but as soon as I walked into the department, um, I came across a couple of, couple of the employees. And they were just, they were very welcoming, you know, and ever since I started uh being there as a volunteer, everybody has treated me so kindly. They've always been very inclusive, you know, and I worked well with them, if that makes any sense. You know, sometimes you, you work with certain uh employers or um coworkers and you just, you. You run into problems a lot, or maybe like it takes too much of an effort to have a conversation, but the, the conversation is easy. You know, with a lot of people, so it, it feels like. It's not really cheap, but it feels more at home, you know, like I'm, I'm just moved here. The town is my home. Um, I enjoy the people that are here from this little town, and I, I want to work at Southwick because the culture is so valuable. Uh, I've noticed across different departments, um, but not everybody finds that. I've heard a toxic environment. I've heard of environments that are not inclusive. And, but I don't, I don't see any, I don't see that here. I see something that's very welcoming, very kind. And a place that I can grow. So I realized that just being a volunteer. And if they can treat me like that as a volunteer, I'm sure they'll treat me even better employees, so. I, I just think it's a good thing.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that assessment of our fire department.
Of course.
Jessica, in your view, how does the chain of command differ in emergency and non emergency situations?
I'm sorry, may you explain that a little bit better?
How does the chain of command differ? If it was an emergent or non emergent situation?
So I know that when it comes to the chain of command in um, in an emergency situation, um, you wanna make sure um. That your. In my perspective, you should, you need to know where your place is, right? Um, you need to know who you're talking to, who you're listening to. Um. I remember, I know in certain calls, especially depending on how, why the emergency situation is, sometimes you have to break it down, making sure that you're only uh. You know, responding to one officer to make sure that you're only um, you know, communicating with certain people, right? Um, I know that. You know, there is right structure and you have to make sure that um, your. You just have to make sure that you're, you're following proper instructions depending on, you know, um. You know, who you're communicating with. But when I go to non emergency situation, um. Chain of commands. I believe is. Um, I'm sorry, I'm having a little bit of trouble with this question. Um. I believe it to, to be. More or less the, the same in regards to respect levels when it comes to having mutual respect. Um, hopefully I'm answering this question correctly, but um, not emergency versus emergency. Um. I think. That everybody has. A mutual respect and mutual understanding of each other and still, um. Sorry, that's my, that's my bad.
Yeah, you did well. Relax.
I was trying very, it's very hard to explain it correctly. Uh, I just see everybody as having a mutual respect, a one another mutual understanding and having. A good bond and a relationship with each other, but when it comes to emergency situation, there is like, if somebody gives you an order. You know, and as long as it's not affecting life, safety and property and things like that, not immediate life threat, then you know.
Good answer. All right. How do you handle an assignment that was given to you from a superior and you don't agree with that assignment? I think that's a better way of putting it.
I don't agree with that assignment. Um, well, I guess it kind of goes back to an order, right? Or um. If I have an officer, especially with their knowledge and their expertise and, and things like that, um. If I was handed an assignment, whether or not I agree with it or not, um, typically I would follow the assignment, you know, um, but. As soon as something becomes a threat to life and safety, um, because that, that's our primary concern, it's response, right? Considering life, property, providing safety. As soon as that becomes a threat, that's when you, you need to feel like, hold on, this doesn't. This doesn't align. Um, and you know, obviously if. In like a very rare unfortunate circumstance, if you know, it was like. Somebody's asking you to steal something or go against like a very strict morality, that's when you would. Put a foot down and say, no, you know, or talk it out hopefully, you know, um, but. That's the balance of the thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vogel. We've been at this for a few hours now.
That's okay. That's okay.
What was your greatest failure? And what did you learn from that experience? And it doesn't have to be just fire or EMT.
My greatest failure.
We're gonna give you some time, so. There's no rush here.
I don't know if, I don't have like a single event that. That I would assume that's like my biggest failure, um, because it actually turned into a success. But I remember at moments when I felt like. Like the biggest failure in the world, and that's honestly when I decided to uh. Leave my first job that I got out of college. Three months into it, like I, I remember first thing in the job and I was telling everybody, they were so proud of me. They're just like. Oh, congratulations. We knew you were gonna be successful. We like, you're gonna do a great job. You know, you're exactly what. You're in the same place that I thought that you wanted to be out of college. Um, and. Then I had to go to everybody, all my friends and family, and tell them I want to leave. You know, I want to, I was in fire one and I decided to pursue firefighting and, but nobody saw me doing that in my life. Nobody expected it. So when they heard that, they were just like. I'm not really sure about that. Are you sure? Is she okay? Is she mentally okay? Um, and I had to eventually stop. Thinking about what other people thought about me, right? Because I worked towards success in other people's eyes. You know, I should have made a difference. That's what my parents wanted me to make. I made my communication convinced that's what I was supposed to be. So soon as I went against that. Like, ah, what is she saying with her life? And, but you know. Yeah, eventually I realized that, you know, the right people will support me, the right people will love me. And at the end of the day, it's about what makes me happy, right? And I, I've never been willing to work hard for something that's genuinely like for me and what I enjoy. And at the end of the day, that was good enough for me. But at first, it really felt terrible because I had no support system. But it felt like failing in other people's eyes. So that was, that is more success eventually, but it felt like that.
It turned into a game for the town of South.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are you aware that this is a small department that will be growing over the years to come? Where do you see yourself in the next three to seven years?
Three to seven years. So if it's around that time, hopefully I would. Be a firefighter paramedic, right? I still would have to go to med school and accomplish that. Um. It's funny because a lot of people that I talk to, um, who are in, you know, policing or. First, actually, actually in general, everybody wants to be top dog, right? Everybody wants to be higher in rank structure. Everybody wants to take on that huge leadership role. They want that status. But um, I've always been one to actually just be that team player, right? And it doesn't actually, I don't see myself wanting to be, you know, that higher ranking officer when it comes to leadership, right? That's not my primary goal. Um, but I really do enjoy like. Seeing the way we training division can come together, right? Like I, I. Jeff is actually our, our training officer and he, he's been coming up with a lot of great ideas for the department to make sure that, you know, good, proper. Interactive training is, is coming along. And when I was working in my internship and things like that, I really enjoyed the hiring process. I enjoy training interns and it's, it's all about getting people excited, right? Get excited about the job, enjoy what you're doing and enjoy the whole process. Um, and I actually enjoy being a part of that. So I don't know if that would happen in three, five years, right? Like. I see this as like you're, you're constantly learning, right? So I never know at what point, you know, can you teach others, right? Um, but that's definitely something that I would be interested in, helping anything like that. Even uh, somebody was talking about being interested in learning a. Uh, physical exercise thing, uh, like a, like a physical training program, uh, like for a drill. And I was like, sign me up. Let's do it. Let's figure something out. But yeah, I'm not like a, a physical instructor. And I'm like, me either, we could figure it out. I like, I like things like that, you know, I like getting people involved, whether that's in the department or within the community or interacting between both. So those are the types of leadership positions that I see. Um, but. That's where I think so. And so, of course.
Very good.
Jessica, now it's your opportunity to make any statement that you'd like to make to this board or ask any questions.
Of course. Um, uh, I know that there are plenty of other options for this position and we know that when it comes to their education. Um, there are a lot further along in learning this career. Um, I've only just recently uh, like dipped my toe into the world of EMT. And I just graduated fire one in December, so my experience definitely lacks compared to the other candidates. But um, I do wanna say that, um, even though. Even if I weren't to get this position now, um, I, I know that there are plenty of opportunities available outside, but ever since then, I've actually joined the department and become a member of this community. Um, more so than ever, I, I want to be in this department. Uh, I, I enjoy the people. I work well with them. Um, I never feel like. I can't go to um, my fellow coworkers and ask for help. Uh, I, they're always lending an extra hand and I enjoy that. I feel welcome to there. And I feel like that's so rare to find because their values align with my values. So, and I know that my experience or my education lacks. And I remember being asked questions before, I said, what kind of skill can you bring to this department? And I said, not as much as I wish that I could, but. I can bring myself. I, I can work hard for it. I can do it. I can bring my, my attitude. I can, I can bring my work ethic. I can try my best. And, and on, on paper, my resume is the best, but I can, can do what I can to. Serve this department and this town well, but.
Thank you very much, Jessica. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jessica. Rich, when you're through, if you could come back.
Again, I'm not going to put you on the spot. Each of the board members did a did see the ranking of the assessment, you know, that was done. And we have gone over all the resumes individually. Are you comfortable, whether, you know, in the case of making one or two appointments? Are you comfortable with all four of the candidates or would you like to deviate from?
So I'm comfortable with all four, but I'd like to make two recommendations going forward. So Ian Hurley, he comes with experience as a firefighter paramedic, scored best in our assessment center as well as our interviews. So I think he should definitely be number one. And we only have one position, I believe he would be the best candidate for that position. Secondly, I think that Krista Downs has done a lot of things getting ready for becoming a firefighter paramedic. She also, you don't know this, we had asked her if for some reason she was offered a position, that she would have to delay becoming a paramedic because she needed to enter the fire academy first. Otherwise, it could be almost two years before she had an opportunity to go to the fire academy. So she wouldn't be able to do that part of the job. And she was very accepting and understood exactly where we were coming from. And she figured that wouldn't be a problem. So I think that speaks to her as well. But I also, we have two other candidates that if not for this hiring, certainly are strong candidates and they're like all four of them would be part of the department.
Right. Thank you very much, Rich.
All right. Thank you. And thank you, everybody, for your contribution to the fire department.
All right, moving right along, 7:00 PM, we're going to meet with the DPW director. Randy, right on time.
Yeah.
Hey, can you let John Allen sit here? You should be free.
Randy, I'm going to be rude and turn my back on anyone who speaks. I'm going to share with Mr. Mokel.
All right, I'll do a quick introduction here and then I'll just move over to John Allen. So as you are aware, in 2021, the town was awarded a site readiness grant through the Mass Development Program to look at the study of connecting Hudson Drive to Sam West Road, which included an expansion of utilities to that neighborhood, including water, sewer, gas, fiber and other utilities. That study also looked at the potential development that could arise from that utility expansion. I'm sorry, I lose capital, please, based on the current zoning and some of these regulations. So that study is complete and we are here to present that to the town through this one meeting. And so I'm just calling John Allen from Fuss O'Neil, Amanda Gregoire from Mass Development. And I think I see John Goddard there as well. So at this time, I'll come over to John Allen. And then afterwards, if you have any questions, we can.
Thanks, Randy. Yeah, so I'm gonna just making sure that everyone can see the screen, okay? I just switched over to the next slide. I'm making sure that everyone can see. It should be a team slide right now. So.
No, not yet.
Oh, you.
We're still on this cover sheet.
How's that?
There you go.
Thank you.
Can everybody in the room hear what's going on? Okay.
All right. Thank you. As Randy had said, this was a team effort. The the team consisted of municipal employees from from Southwick, Randy himself, Dick and John Goddard, the town planner, John's here, as well as Jennifer Cohen from Mass Development and Amanda Gregoire from Mass Development and the lone soldier over here from Fussin O'Neil, me, John Allen. What I'd like to do, I don't know, Amanda, if you want to share a little bit about what Mass Development does and what we were actively pursuing here.
Sure. Happy to do that. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. So so thank you, John, and thank you to the select board for allowing us to present tonight. I'm Amanda Gregoire, Vice President of Real Estate Services at Mass Development. We are the state's development finance agency and land bank. So the information we're going to share with you tonight is from a study funded by our Site Readiness Grant Program. Site Readiness is a competitive grant program that aims to increase the Commonwealth's inventory of large, well-located, project-ready sites. We're heading into our seventh year of the program. We've funded almost $16 million worth of projects, 68 of them across the state. We are part of the Community One Stop for Growth, which is the new single application portal for economic development grant programs in the state. This specific study was funded through our FY21 funding round with an award to the town to conduct an evaluation and identify lands suitable for industrial development. As part of that, Mass Development engaged with our house doctor, Fussin O'Neil, to perform that assessment. And I'll hand it back over to John to tell you more about the work that they undertook and and what their findings are.
Thanks, Amanda. Moving forward. Let me know if you see the last slide here. It should be an introductory slide. Great. So, yes, in short, we were looking at evaluating infrastructure improvements in the town of Southwick to identify and improve potentially available land for commercial and industrial development. The way we went about this is we gathered up available data, whether it be GIS, town mapping, that could direct us to generating a list of properties with specific criteria. Some of that criteria included 50 to 100 acres of developable land, large tracts of land, easy access from many roads, and access to utilities. We identified many parcels that had some opportunities. Many that had some constraints, whether it be wetlands or critical habitat. And then it kind of narrowed it down to a couple of properties and and one, one and one definitely that we would like to pursue as part of this grant here. So. Next. So this is our analysis. We went through the zoning, the natural resources, the utilities, and and again, talking about developing that that criteria for the developable parcels. We indicated some larger we indicated some larger developable land and 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 some contiguous land that was developable as well. Again, closer to similar use, easy access, and access to existing utilities. And a lot of these parcels had the constraints of wetlands, constraints of brooks running through natural habitat. And a lot of it was privately owned land. One parcel in particular that stuck out from from the crowd is is one that's actually going through some planning activities already with a future solar project on the the Tilcon property we we were calling it. It's the gravel pit area at the end of Hudson Drive. In particular, this area is located within an industrial zone. Hudson Drive, as many are aware, is an industrial roadway that currently dead ends. We would look at extending that. There is access to some municipal utilities, not all. There lacks gas is one of the big ones and fiber as well. But there is access to water, you know, actually. There's a big potential for development associated with this, not really associated with the solar project, but in and around this solar project, which show on approximately 510 square feet of potential development in this area. And as well, there's a property to the north that could as well be developed further. One of the things we did investigate as part of this development was an extension of Sam West Road. And should be up there. Sam West Road currently ends after the intersection of bike trail. We would look to extend this. This would provide better access to properties to that area of development that we were looking at and also get cars off of major roads. You would be able to access it through feeding hills and then off of Tannery as well. So it would reduce the traffic impact through the core of of town. And with the and with the construction of that road, we'd improve municipal water, sanitary and potentially gas to that area. And with that, I think I'm just gonna flip it back over to Randy and he can that over. So next steps, you want to take that over?
Yeah, you want to go on a second.
Oh. Do you need need me to do something, Randy?
Just a little more.
Okay, so sorry about that.
So so we're here, we're talking to the board in the town about the study. The next steps will be to look at funding that expansion from Hudson Drive to Sam West Road, including utility expansions that would be part of that project. We would be looking to do that walking through the Mass Development Program as another phase to this first phase that we are just not under, we're getting. And one thing we we want to make note of, so we all know that we're updating those next plan. That's an ongoing process. This may or may not fall into what that new bench plan looks like. But we got some points noted that next point isn't with the and those figures that show earlier today on the silicon property, that was often sexual. We had had some preliminary discussions with Silicon about their thoughts on that property. As you probably know, they didn't lay on the ground, our operation. They worked on that for several years and probably decades, and they are probably pretty close to completing that operation. Historically, it's all kind of dozens at all locations, and once they're finished with their travel operations, they do look to turn that property over to one other, it is commercial or industrial. So that might timeline kind of fits into where we are with this project. So I think that's the discussion we have today. And certainly, you won't be taking any special questions.
I think we got, it's getting late and we've had a lot of a lot of things to digest, Randy. So why don't we kind of digest and and think about it?
Just a couple of quick points, though. This is, I know Randy and I have spoken about this over the years. This has been something for the better part of 20 years, has been a discussion point as to what happens with that property as the the mining operation at the end of Hudson Drive comes to its conclusion, right? It's it's already kind of happened a little bit in sections. So the Wally Way portion of off of Hudson Drive was a former Tilcon site and part of their planning process and part of their permitting processes besides the the monitoring and and things they do during their operations is part of their their planning process is to establish a reuse plan for that property at the conclusion of the operation. And, you know, one of the the things to look at is if you take Hudson Drive and then connect it back to Sam West and and interact with how that would interact with the rail trail and the other traffic over there. But that does give you a better access to your industrial park. And another way in and out of your industrial park without coming through the 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 key intersection at 57 and 10 and 202. So very preliminary, but it it's it's a great exercise. I want to, you know, thank Randy for the work that's gone into this. And, you know, this is all part of a planning process and it certainly is very, very relevant to the master plan and the master planning process that's ongoing now and is part of the discussion for what, you know, 20 years from now, what that type of development would look like and, you know, what kind of development you would want to put there to make suitable use of that land. It's today, it's zone industrial restricted, I believe, and industrial. And so it's a good topic of conversation to carry forward. So again, thank you for the work here.
Absolutely. Thank you, Randy, and everybody else on online. We certainly appreciated the grant money that gave us the enabled us to do the study and now we can digest it, get more input from the planning board and other boards and commissions and see where we want to go from this point. Anything? Okay. All right. Then we are going to back to our agenda. Acknowledge payables warrant number 2306B dated 8/9/22 in the amount of $3,615,220.79. Acknowledge payroll warrant number 2304 dated 8/16/22 in an amount of $255,475.75. I need a motion to accept the open, the minutes of the open session dated 8/8/22.
I'll make the motion as amended. I have one minor change to send back to Robin.
Need a second?
Motion seconded.
All right, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mokel, aye.
Jason Perone, aye.
Okay, I need a motion to accept the executive session minutes dated 8/8/22.
Doug Mokel will make that motion.
Seconded.
A roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mokel, aye.
Jason Perone, aye.
Pass the executive's best. Okay. All right, now we're going to our action folder. First thing I have here is to accept a donation of well, we have several donations here. And this is going to the Southwick Police Department Office of Animal Control. So it's going to the Southwick Animal Control Shelter. And the first is $108 from IBS of Southwick, Massachusetts. Carrie Lackey of Southwick, Mass, two checks of $50 each for a total of 100. The Martell children for doing a lemonade stand for $208. And I think an applause for that. And we also have an anonymous donor for 100 for a total of $516. So I need a motion.
Doug Mokel will gladly, with our thanks, make that motion.
Jason Perone, second.
We're going to go roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mokel, aye.
Jason Perone, aye.
All right, we need to approve an invoice number 14 from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. This is for one of our community block grants programs. This is for the North Lake. This is for one of our community uh block grants programs, this is for the North Lake. Road, North Lake Avenue Engineering and Design Project Housing Rehabit- Rehabilitation Program. And our community food pantry in the amount of six thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and thirteen cents, I need a motion.
Do we not usually have that break down with it?
Um, you have the original? Uh, looks like the it's the same thing.
Right, usually there's an item.
Right, right.
I'll make a motion to table us till our next meeting.
You got it, we have a motion to table, is there a second? Uh roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Okay, uh let's see. Okay. We're going to, well, we have a couple more things, I'm going off to two different agendas here. We'd like to acknowledge the uh resignation of uh Terry Mish. Uh from the Finance Committee, he resigned to uh our town moderator who does the appointment. Uh Terry uh has certainly been a a voice on that committee, I think he was a liaison to the Fire Department, is that correct? Chief? Um Terry Mish was the liaison from the Finance Committee, I think he did an excellent job. Um so Terry is is decided to, as he says, hang up my spurs. And after serving on the planning board and finance committee, a great deal of thanks and if Robin, if we could issue a. Certificate of appreciation that the board will sign, if that's okay with the board.
Absolutely.
All right, the next thing I have here is we have a letter from the Southwick Civic Fund, Inc. And it's concerning a uh program that they are going to be putting on. Uh they're calling it Hidden Heroes Program. To recognize and thank all the essential workers who've served our community so diligently and faithfully. Through the COVID nineteen episode, this is a program that they are gonna be putting on October twenty-fifth. It's a Tuesday at six P M at the Southwick Regional School Auditorium, and it is open to the public. So, Robin, if we could keep that, carry that on uh old business so that we don't forget. And also if we could uh prepare something to present that night also. Okay, we're going to, that, okay, that was uh. Okay, we're going to new business. And under that uh discussion, under chapter, Mass General Law, chapter two, six, eight. A special municipal designation request for Community Preservation Committee. Uh we've done this for the uh Park and Rec and now we're doing this for the uh. Community preservation because we uh have some people that do business with the town of Southwood on it. I'm going to, uh they all signed it, but I believe the only one that we need to, you know, if I'm.
Designate the board, sir, and then they would file, you needed, you. This board will vote to designate the Community Preservation Commission as SMA for Special Municipal Employee. And then employees, and then if a person has. And they can issue where they'd be appearing in front of a board or an appearance of conflict, they could file the appropriate forms with the town.
Okay.
Or their appointing authority.
So we will take, since they took a vote uh to designate them as special employees. We'll take a vote if someone would make that motion.
Correct, they've made a request now of the Board of Selectment and now we we need to make a motion to designate them as special municipal employees. And I will gladly support that motion to designate the Community Preservation Commission as special municipal employee.
Need a second?
I will second.
Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mogul, for explaining that, because it does get computer. All right. Uh, new business, any new business, Mr. Mogul?
No.
Mr. Peron?
Nothing new.
Okay, all right, then we're going on to old business. And the first thing under that is the uh North Pond Violation Seeking Meeting with the Department of Fish and Games, DPW. Conservation and Fire Police, et cetera, uh that has been scheduled for August thirtieth. Um and I will be uh representing the board. Uh, next thing's Town Hall HVAC Design Work is is uh just about completed. Um but as we're talking about that, uh we got some good news that uh we have everything set for the. Roof replacement project. Uh contract amount is nine hundred thirty-two thousand, eight hundred sixty-five dollars. General contractors will be Young Developers LLC. Uh we're grateful to have Art Lala, who will be our clerk uh to oversee the project. Uh this does not include the HVAC project. That'll be close to another million dollars uh when that's finally uh put out to bed. Well, that's FYI. Um, the attorneys are getting together, setting dates. Uh to start the process of the sewer system IMA with the city of Westfield, that's to take our. Sewage from Southwick to be treated at the uh facility in Westfield. Uh we we're hoping to get that done so that we will be prepared to take a vote at the. Annual Town Meeting in May of next year. Okay, Deputy Fire Chief Decision and Other Discussion. Um. Is the board prepared to make a decision tonight? Smoglin?
Ledger of the Chair.
Um, due to the fact that our decision on that also impacts the decision. On the fighter fire firefighters EMTs, I'm gonna suggest that. We've had an opportunity to go over, we've had some good interviews, I'm prepared to make a decision tonight.
You looking for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
No problem.
No problem.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
Um, it was incredibly good interviews by both candidates.
Absolutely.
Um and I know we 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 say that a lot, but in this case, it really, really rings true. I I'd like to make a motion to appoint uh Jessica Bishop as the next deputy chief. Is there a second?
After the interview process, I will second that motion.
Okay, um. All right, then, uh without any further discussion, I think Mr. Mogul hit it on the head. We had two very qualified candidates and we're in the same position, we're in a lot of time, we can only appoint one person. Um, so I I think uh. Jess has a little bit of an edge having been here longer uh than.
I just, I just wanna say, from my experience in the public safety world, that was one of the best interviews I've ever heard.
It was an excellent interview, you're absolutely correct. So, with that, we have a motion, we have a second. Uh this is all pending, negotiating and all the. As Mr. Mogul likes to refer, all the yada, 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 physicals, et cetera, uh all that, so with that. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Uh I don't know if Jessica, Jess, you still here? No, she left, well, congratulations, I think it was a good job. Okay, uh let's see. We have a request uh to put a warrant article in the next town meeting for approval. To form a municipal light plant. And Mr. Mogul, why don't you explain this so this doesn't get too confused?
Seeing how it's eight twenty, but um. The High Speed Internet Subcommittee has met multiple times. We've been through multiple financial models, we're talking to uh Whip City Fiber or Westro G N E. About entering into a an agreement with them to provide high-speed internet service. Um, in order to do that, the town needs to form a municipal-owned utility. Uh for the perp- express purpose of giving us access to the polls within our own town. There is a a prescribed process under Mass General Law to make that happen. And part of that process is that you have to go in front of two successive town meetings in two successive years. It um and have two positive votes at those two meetings in order to do that. So, if we said go today, we could be even two plus years away from being able to have the right. To put stuff on our own poles or poles that exist in the town south, we don't actually own them. So, given that it takes two successive votes, we're not sure when the next town meeting's going to be. There's zero risk in putting a warrant article forth. Given the financial models we have, given given the absolute minimum cost of having a a warrant article put together. We've provided some sample articles from other towns that have already passed at town meeting, subject, they'll be reviewed by our town council, of course. But the worst is we say yes, which puts us to another town meeting either in twenty-three or twenty-four. So it's the recommendation and a vote of the High Speed Internet Subcommittee. Um to request of this board to make a motion to put that forth as a warrant article for the next town meeting. So I will put that together in the form of a motion.
Need a second?
I will absolutely second that.
Okay, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Okay, uh next thing I have here is Conservation Commission vacancy. Probably should have been taking care of that tonight, but if we could put it on the agenda for next week, you know, any, any of the applicants. Uh we'll give them the opportunity to speak and they can make a decision. Um. Let's see, review of the South of Planning Board Comprehensive Impact Statement Handbook, I think I turned that over to you, Mr.
You did, and um the planning board met on it and discussed it last week during their meeting. There was a lot of good back and forth, there's an updated draft that's come out, which I'll circulate back to. To you guys, it's uh still a work in process and they still have their hearing open, but they're covering basically the consultative. Part of that impact statement as to which. Uh department heads or people that need to be consulted with as part of the process, whether it's the DPW Director or the Conservation Coordinator. Or the Town Planner, um et cetera.
Okay. All right, next thing I have here is, and this is uh kind of FYI. And I'm I'm gonna read off some of the information and it will be available if anybody needs it. This is something that came up at the uh uh meeting of the CRC. Uh concerning the uh chapter ninety-one license application by the gentleman that wants to put in a forty-slip. Commercial docking facility at what is called one forty-one uh Congamon Road, former Krabby Joe's. And the department, and this is from the Department of Environmental Protection Waterways Regulation Program. Notice of License Application Pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter Ninety-One. Waterways Application Number Two, Two, W, W, O, One, Dash, Zero, Zero, Nine, Two, Dash, A, P, P. And the department will consider all written comments on this application received by September twelfth, twenty twenty-two. That's the public comments deadline, so if we can send this out, I think it's been sent out already by Dick. I'm gonna look at Michelle Pratt, has it been already sent out and?
No, that can be announced on our website, um coming up. Bring out voting to the membership to um say whether they are for or against the moving first.
Okay, so we're gonna have this available to anybody that wants that information, we can send it out to CRC. Lake Management, uh Planning Board, uh any, any other board I can think of. Robbie, you wanna take care of that tomorrow, please? Okay. All right, next thing I have is military leave research. And.
I spoke uh at length with Senator Vila's office, I just spoke out with his chief, the Chief of Staff today. The um overall interpretation of the law is basically twenty seventeen, it changed. It went from the seventeen-day consecutive to um thirty days consecutive. And twenty twenty-one, it changed yet again, um but based on that, it would be a forty days of paid leave. Um after talking with the Chief of Staff of Senator Vila's office. Um they feel that, um I'm gonna find the subsection here right now, under general law, thirty-three fifty-nine. Was updated in twenty twenty-one, um subsection E. You know, I would say that it states that any employee of the city town which by virtue of its county commissioner, city council or inhabitants at a town meeting. Has accepted this section or similar provisions of. Either law shall be entitled to benefits and protections of this section or the benefits of the accepted earlier law. After speaking with um the Chief of Staff and Chief Aid, excuse me, from Senator Vila's office. We located the Secretary of State's um Veterans Affairs uh handbook. And it states clearly that we are to abide by the new modification. Okay, so.
Which means what?
We thirty days paid leaves.
Right.
Military leave.
But was there, and I and I apologize, um. As some of this was explained to me, so that. Two questions.
Yep.
One, does that mean that? It's not gonna financially be detrimental for someone who gets called up or or has a military obligation?
It would not be financially, it's the same standards. You know, they're going, and we offset that difference, they're not gonna, they they can't be charged any leave, vacation time, seniorities.
Agreed, but if their pay is lower at the military side, does the town make up the difference between their town pay and military?
Correct, yes.
Second, the second part of that question, and thank you for doing this research, by the way, is. Was there any provision or is there any something to do with calculation of hours worked to level out a pay period? That could be detrimental to someone? And I don't wanna get into very specifics, if we need to go in from an executive session point of view of this, but contractually, we have a. We've kind of leveled out the hours, you're familiar, right?
I absolutely.
If someone were to take, have to do military service on their days off. Would they then have to be charged those vacation days against their?
No, that can't be charged any during those thirty days, that during the time that they are covered by the.
Even if it's the two week, you know, one weekend a month thing, but they.
No, or they conserve. The weekends, that's what's a diff- dr- drill training is not covered by us, it's their active duty. Like, if we have an uh like, an individual that was activated, you know, he, we think we've talked about this last week, our last meeting. Where he was being charged vacation days for his actual days off, that cannot happen.
Very well, that's that's the excellent answer, thank you very much for doing that work, appreciate it.
No problem, all right, so. We'll continue to make sure, you know, by having.
Labor Council, yes, I'm still waiting.
And I I have seen emails that Labor Council wants to review it too. Because of of certain issues, but that'll be done in an executive session.
Yep.
Okay, but thank you again, Jason, for doing that, that's good. You know, I know you're a veteran and we appreciate your service to our country.
I always say thank you, but you don't have to, I chose to do it, but thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Old business, and I gotta go find my sheet here for.
Mr. Fox, you wanna come back to this now that we've made some headway there?
Yes, I was just looking real quick to see if I was supposed to say anything before you do that, okay? Uh one thing I was supposed to say under old business or under new business is the last free concert. Will be this Wednesday at Wally Park, uh this will be the seventh free concert. Uh uh there's been a great turnout at Wally Park, it's a great event, it's a family event. Uh so this is the last concert, I think it's for uh country lovers, this one. Uh but modern country untold, so uh I hope everybody turns out, uh this was a great use of uh. Uh cultural council funds and donations of different businesses and individuals in town. Uh to keep this thing going and uh as and I just wanna also say. I've had more people come up to me from out of town and in town. Who've gone up to Wally Park and have said, what a beautiful facility we have up there, just absolutely beautiful facility. And uh it's it's the envy of a lot of other communities, so.
Westfield doesn't have anything.
Right, so.
It's private, so.
Right, so uh uh if if you're not doing anything Wednesday night. Uh, if, if you're not doing anything Wednesday night, that's the final concert. Get out there, bring the kids, have a good time. Um, now. I think that was the only thing I was supposed to announce. Unless I forgot anything.
Good news is we're meeting in a week in case you did forget.
Okay.
It's not two weeks this time.
That's a good news.
Oh, that's true, no.
Okay.
Same.
Yes, I think I am ready to prepare to make a decision on the. Full-time firefighter E M T. Any problems?
I have no problem with that.
Any problems?
No.
Okay. Um, we have the recommendation of uh, the Deputy Chief. I think it's a good recommendation. I think all the candidates did outstanding on their interviews. I hope they all keep thinking about Southwick. Uh, but I, I think that uh, uh, I would accept the motion, uh, if somebody will make it on the chief's uh. A recommendation of Ian Hurley.
I will make the motion to appoint Ian Hurley.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Uh, just before we take the vote, just to explain. Reason why we're only appointing one. Is if, if in fact, we had chosen another candidate for Deputy Chief, that would have created another opening. We would have been voting on two. But since that did not happen, only voting on one person tonight. So we have a motion made and second, roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Okay. Last call through old business.
Nothing at this time.
Okay. We will be going into executive session. And we'll be meeting over in the Selectman's Conference Room. A motion to go into executive session pursuant to Matt General Law Chapter. Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, two and three, Chapter two, fourteen, Section one B. Litigation matters or threaten litigation. Executive session regarding Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, two and three, Chapter two, fourteen, Section one B. And. Exception two. Now, let's see, move to go and. I'm, I'm looking for the right one.
Personnel.
I'm looking for personnel and legal. Okay, move to go into executive sessions at such strategy respect to litigation. That the chair declared that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of a body and not to reconvene. Uh. I'm going to read this. Move to go into exec sense, discuss strategy, respect to collective bargaining and move that the. Chair moved to go into executive conduct strategy in session preparation negotiation for non-union personnel too, not to reconvene. Regarding Chapter two, fourteen, Section one B, a person shall have a right against unreasonable substantial or serious interference. With their privacy. The Superior Court shall have jurisdiction equity to enforce such right. In connection therewith to award damage. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mowgli, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Thank you and good night.